Okay. Meeting now called or? We're gonna have to skip around, uh, do the proposed disposition of real property first. Due to the way the timing is on the, on these things. So, proposed disposition of real property. The Lee County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August 18, 2020 at 4:30 PM in the General District Courtroom of Lee County Courthouse in Johnsville, Virginia. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comment on the proposed disposition of the following properties. Tax parcel 21A132 containing approximately 59 plus or minus acres in the Healy's Creek community and fronting on State Route 765 and 712. Tax parcels 53A11, BK21-4, 8-11, and 53A11, BK31-3, 14 through 16 containing approximately 1.015 plus or minus acres and the town of Johnsville with the frontage on US Highway 58 and Johnson Street. And tax parcel 28A30D containing approximately .009 plus or minus acres in the Jasper community at the intersection of US Route 23 and Route 611. We need to open that for public comment on those?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, uh, the floor is open to public comment on those items. Okay, here are no comments?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I've mentioned this before and it may be an issue that doesn't come into play, but I think I would be remiss if I didn't at least mention this. On that first parcel, 21A132, that was a parcel that was acquired for the Powell River Ecosystem Restoration Eli and Tuckets Creek Sub Basin Project. I'd previously attempted to get some information from the Corps of Engineers on that. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, they were working from home for a long period of time. I'm not sure if they're all back in the office yet now or not, but, and we're talking about 20-year-old files of theirs. I'm not sure how successful they would have been in finding them. What I do have is three items. One is the deed itself, which states that the land is being acquired for the Powell River Ecosystem Restoration Project. The second thing that was adopted in August of 2000 is a memorandum of understanding regarding this ecosystem restoration project. It's between the Planning District Commission, the Division of Mines, Minerals and Energy, and the county, and this has to do with maintenance and upkeep of the project areas and the treatment areas. There is a statement in that MOU that unless sooner terminated by agreement of the parties, this MOU shall be for a term of 25 years commencing on the latter of the date of execution of the MOU or the effective date of the Corps of Engineers agreement. Again, this was executed August 22nd of 2000. In conjunction with that and signed at the same time and adopted was the project cooperation agreement with, between the county and the Corps of Engineers, and there is a statement in that that states the non-federal sponsor, which is the county, shall ensure that land, easements, and rights away that the government determines to be required for the operation and maintenance of the project, and that were provided by the non-federal sponsor are retained in public ownership for uses compatible with the authorized purposes of the project. Again, this particular tract of land, there is not an active treatment facility on it. It was acquired under the direction of the Corps, whether it was for access to other properties, whether it was to be a potential disposal area or whatever, it was acquired in conjunction with the property. So whether or not that creates any kind of responsibility or anything with the county in attempting to sell it, I can't say. But I just wanted to make you aware of what I had found on that.
And I would say, if I may, Jane had me look over all of those as well, and my opinion would be that it's not worth it for the county to open themselves up. I mean, it's the chance there that opens everyone to come, but probably not. But clearly, the MOU states that it was for a term of 25 years. We've not gotten there yet, and my advice would be, you know, to hold off on that until that term expires.
I believe that we take the issue on the 59-acre tract and take that up under close session, under consultation with counsel, and that we move to go with the sale on the other two tracts.
Okay, you got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? You want to wait till five to do that, if they're back in here?
We're required to. If you want to.
I can go ahead and do that departmental reports from the animal control area.
Yeah, and I don't think he's here. He, uh...
You're not saying here?
He, uh, had a tongue-in-the-thing remember to the doctor today, so he said he might, probably wouldn't be able to get back to it. He was just going to follow up on the comments that the lady made last month regarding the CAT Stay Neutered Program.
Okay, we'll move on to the treasures report. I think we need to get into public expression until we get by that. Special use permit. I got a couple different papers from those.
Do you okay taking approval of amendments?
Shall we do that?
Need a motion to amend the agenda for that?
Approval of amendments on July 1st, 2020, regular meeting, and August 5th, 2020, recess meeting.
Assembly?
Got a second? Back. All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? And we got payroll, county administrator reports, payroll warrants have been issued, and approval of dispersion. Move to the phase of B. Got a motion to pay the bill, got a second?
My second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote?
Both.
Get it. Get it both. Okay, my clock says five. Okay, we got special use permit. Lee County Planning Commission, Lee County Board of Supervisors will hold a joint public hearing Tuesday, August 18, 2020, 5:00 PM in the General District Courtroom of Lee County Courthouse in Johnsville, Virginia. The purpose of the hearing is to solicit input on the following request. Carolyn Cooper and Rebecca Bush have filed for a special use permit to allow a dump wide manufactured home in a PC Village commercial district. Property is located in the Kioki community and consists of approximately .50 acres of land. Partial number 8A-142. Property is located on the north side of State Route 606, approximately one-eighth of a mile pipe zone is marked. And we are open for public comment.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, there's been no appropriation voiced through phone calls up to this point.
No opposition, so I wouldn't think you'd have to say anything on your behalf either. Okay, hearing none. We need the board to...
They need to give the planning commission opportunity to meet separately and to vote on the matter and then return their decision to the board before you take action.
Okay.
You can move on with other business if you so choose.
Well, we'll just go right, dig right on into public expression then. On public expression, if we would state your name, address, and will we allow three minutes? Three minutes? Is that good?
Yeah. Don Belcher, 1088, Bethel Valley Road, Kent, Virginia. I'm here to ask the board's help on the problem I have with my neighbor. He is rallying my four coon dogs right on my property line, and it's 24/7. I've had to move from my bedroom to the living room to try to get away from this. I just wanted to see if we could have any input and maybe start a noise ordinance in the county. I talked to him about it earlier, a couple months ago. He moved them up in the woods, which was a whole lot better than, uh, came to talk to the animal control, and they went up there and talked to them, and, uh, so I guess it made him mad because he moved them back down right on my property line, right beside of, uh, my nightlight and my power pole and everything. There's four dogs there, and there's another one in the wood, and I think I'm hearing some little puppies now going on. And it's the coon dogs, and anybody who knows coon dogs can know what they can put out. So I was looking for some help with the board, see if we could start a noise ordinance, if what we could do about taking care of this problem because it's 24/7. I mean, I can't live like this, and I shouldn't have to. I've lived there all my life. He's been there, he was a logger first when he come in there and logged everything. I put up with logging from 5:00 in the morning until 11:00 at night for two years or so, and now this problem. He lives in town. He had these dogs in town, and they was a pain. So either his wife or the town mayor of town, town ordinance made him move these and relocate them, so he brought them up in the valley right beside of me. So I was hoping y'all could put some input in it and see if we could get it started and what I have to do to get it started. Somebody's got to start, you know, law's start because somebody wants to change something. And it's, it's, it's not going to get any better.
Now, he doesn't live there?
No, he doesn't live there. His nephew lives in the little dilapidated mobile trailer there. No water, no, uh, no sewer, so that I don't think they put a sewer in. I don't think, I haven't, I haven't went that route to go to the county and try to push that, you know? I don't want a big confrontation. I don't like confrontation. I just, this is just kind of the point that, you know, I can't, I can't live like that. And I hope it, you know, I hope we can work something out. So if y'all could see way clear and find out what we have to do to get an ordinance in the town, I know towns have it, and why can't we in the county have it? As a person who's lived here all my life, I'm sitting here to have to live like that. Thank you.
Appreciate you. Do we have any type of ordinance at all now with a noise?
Oh, uh, many years ago, there was a ordinance in one area of the county that had to do with refrigerated trailer trucks out on the side of the road right next to several residences. This was probably in the 70s or 80s at the last time when that was in effect. That affected the situation, resolved itself eventually. We looked at a possible noise ordinance maybe eight years ago. I was looking at Mr. Mowgli because I think he was on board when we talked about it last. And you can adopt noise ordinances for various purposes. One of the big things I think you get into is setting, setting a definition of what is considered a violation of the ordinance. It's if it's a certain decibel level, um, and if so, then you need, uh, you probably are going to have to have equipment to measure that, and you're going to have to be present when it's occurring. Another route that can possibly be looked at, I mean, I don't know whether it would pass court muster or not, would be to consider a nuisance suit. And I...
Fuller told me that I could go that route.
I, you know, I hate for a resident to have to actually file suit to be able to sleep at night, but that, that's an issue that you can look at, and of course, if there's other neighbors involved that are being disturbed...
I've got some others.
The more people involved in the suit, the better likelihood that the court's going to maybe listen favorably, but that's always at the court's discretion.
Well, how do the town measure it?
Uh, they've had noise ordinances in effect, a lot of them for years, and whether they've been challenged in recent years or not, I don't know. Everything's getting more technical every day.
Well, I would think too, the way the animals are tied up and that type of thing would have a lot to do with it too. With some of the new lease laws and stuff in effect. Again, certainly something we can definitely look into.
In July, the state passed more mandates on animals, how they're tied and tethered. They're supposed to be in, not in, uh, any extreme heat. They've been out there, how that for the last, you know, how hot it's been, like anything above 85 degrees, they're supposed to be in a tent. That ain't happened.
Right.
Supposed to be in insulated enclosure. He's got them tied to tractor trailer car and a big tape, bait, beam, mud all around, just dirt. I'm sorry, I didn't mean...
Well, that's fine. Appreciate you. We'll certainly, we'll certainly dig into it and see what we can do.
Thank you.
Okay, any more public expression?
Yes, sir. My name is Kurt, is ready, I live at 170 Harmony Drive in St. Charles. The Church of St. Charles, which is now called Greater Outreach Church, is trying to start a rehabilitation for addicted people in St. Charles. And I'd like it removed from the edge of the property to the edge of the school property of less than 60 feet. When it first came to my attention, it was on Facebook, and they claimed it was some church in Ohio that had bought the property. Yet the contact address was Pennington Gap, and the phone number was someplace in Vermont. You ask the church about it, they knew nothing about it, and all of a sudden they admitted it was them. It's a really bad idea for St. Charles. They're going to have that right next to a school. The children there range from three years old to about 10 years old, and they're going to be exposed to this every day.
What is it they're wanting to do?
Drug rehabilitation. They're going to use minors hall and the youth center of what's left of the church up there. They're going to bring people in from Ohio and locally who are addicted to methamphetamine or heroin, and they're going to house them there. That's approximately, I think about 100 yards from my house. I'm going to put up with these people coming across my property daily.
What did you say your last name was?
Ready? Ready? Ready, R-E-A-D-Y.
Okay. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
We're here for the same thing as he is because we live in the county of St. Charles.
You want to come up?
Honey, my name's Bonnie Webb. I live in St. Charles, it's on Webb Hill.
Bonnie Webb?
Bonnie, B-O-N-N-I-T-E. Now, we run the St. Charles Community Center two days a week, and this is something that we really do not need in the middle of St. Charles. It's by the post office and by the, uh, the school, and he for close to, you know, the area that they're wanting to put this in, and it's really not a good idea because we run two days a week, and we've got little kids that come in, and you just don't know what they're going to bring in on us. And if any way we could stop that, we would love to have that stopped.
How is they, you had to do it?
It's, well, they had told us they had sold the building to, uh, like he was talking, uh, somebody out of here. Uh, the, it was the St. Charles Church of God, but it's a greater outreach now, and they have sold both buildings. But there's really nothing left in St. Charles, and that is definitely something that does not need to come in St. Charles.
Thank you.
There's nothing there.
That haven't been sold?
They said they sold it. I don't know, but that's all they...
Now they're admitting it's out.
If any way we can get that looked into and get that stopped, because there's nothing left in St. Charles, I mean, that's a dead end. And then you've got the St. Charles Clinic, you know, not probably 20 feet from the two buildings they're wanting to use, and that is definitely something that don't need to be there. If you all could help us with that, we'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anybody else have any public expression? All right, if not, we'll propose public expression. And I think we have our board back in here with the decision.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the Planning Commission has voted unanimously to recommend to the Board of Supervisors to approve Mrs. Cooper and Mrs. Bush's special use permit application.
Thank you, guys. Okay. I'll make a motion to, uh, go ahead, uh, for the special use.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? There you go. Okay, now the delegation. Ray Vale with Air Med Care and Membership.
Good evening, folks. My name is Ray Vale, I'm with Air Med Care Network, I'm part of the global medical response team. We're the largest air ambulance provider in the world. You know us locally as Air Vac and Wings Air Rescue, which is, I don't care if providers now changed that, um, marketing brand to heart. I'm here to present a proposal for an agreement for the county to offer memberships to its employees, so it is kind of great. We've already partnered with the county school system in doing that. For those of you who don't know what Air Med Care is and it does, um, whenever somebody gets flown in this area especially, it does cost a good amount of money, and a lot of times the insurance is not paid back. A lot of times insurance denies the flights. What we do is we offer a membership which applies to the entire household. And you want to live under that roof, they do not have to be on that person's insurance, and we do that because there's a lot of people who may be taking care of their ancient parents, and they have grandchildren at home, they may have kids off at school, kids back from school. All that it has to do is be under their roof, and that person is covered. This membership is normally $85 a year for a household. We reduced that rate down to 60 for the county employees. Couple different ways, uh, that works is county can provide memberships to the entire, its entire workforce and all their household members for under $10,000, or you can offer it to them as a payroll deduction. That's basically it.
Make any questions?
It's really a good price and a great service, it's often.
It is, and, you know, it's, it's kind of like Bear Street, you know, you need it until you need it. We had partnered before COVID came about, we'd partnered with the school system, we did an enrollment for them, similar to an insurance enrollment. We bring in folks and we go and we speak to your employees. We go to them, try not to disrupt their days. Meet one-on-one, answer any questions that they... When COVID hit, we kind of got backed up, and we were going to, you know, contact the county as well. Had a sheriff's deputy got injured, which flew him, and, you know, we decided we better get back up there and try to make this available to everyone. The realignment of the health system, you know, there are concerns in the community about getting to higher levels of care. That's what we're here to do, is to ensure that these people have that. Within 50 miles of your location, you have five of our aircraft, and it's just not Air Vac or Wings. You also, in this county, you've also seen, um, last year in 2019, you even had BT Life Starter come up here. You also, in this county, you've also seen, um, last year in 2019, you even had UT Lifestar come up here. As well as Wings and Air Vac. But this membership, it applies to you, you know, not only here, but if you're traveling, if you're going to the beach, if you're on vacation, if you're traveling across the country. We have over 400 aircraft in the United States. And if something happens to you and you need to be flown anywhere by us, you have no out-of-pocket expenses, no copay deductibles, anything associated with that flight.
So if dispatch, dispatch is Air Vac and Air Vac's on the call and they dispatch the state police helicopter, do you all turn around and pay the state police, or who has to pay them?
Uh, you as taxpayer pay them, sir.
What's the other one that's private? Is there another one that's for-profit?
There used to be PHI, which was one out of Bristol. That was all, uh, they're, they're gone now.
So y'all are the only private provider?
There's other private providers, but within, within your radius, it's us. Have, you have HART, which is the valid contracted aircraft of ours. You have Air Vac, which is us, and you have Lifestar, which is, are the UT aircraft. Those were the ones that flew into this county last year.
So UT is that, who pays for that if we get called?
UT is our aircraft.
Is there any aircraft here that a citizen has to pay for that is not your aircraft?
Not, not here.
Okay.
For example, if you're, you know, traveling to Nashville, okay? Vanderbilt has their own aircraft, that's competitive to us. We surround Nashville with Air Vac. As you travel, you saw the proposal packet, there's stickers on the back of it. That's one way that we try to prevent that, because every state trooper, sheriff's deputy, firefighter, EMS, they know what that sticker is when they see it. They know that that person's a member, they try to get us to, to them if there is someone else in the, in the region.
Tell them what a helicopter ride costs that you provided.
It's, it's quite expensive. As you can imagine, they're multi-million dollar platforms. And, and costs all depends on, you know, it depends on the aircraft, it depends on the distance traveled, it depends on what happens on that aircraft. Some insurances, you know, they'll pay it without batting an eye. Last year we flew over 120,000 patients nationwide. 52% of those insurance do not want to pay for flights.
So if you're a member, uh, it doesn't matter where you are, it takes care of it?
As long as our aircraft fly you.
That's what I mean.
Yes.
Takes care of full cost?
Yes, sir. What happens is, you know, a lot of people think that, you know, when we fly somebody and we take them to a higher level of care, trauma center, uh, and just say, "Good luck, hope you make it." But we actually follow on with that aftercare, follow up with them, see what our survival rate is, so we can let folks know, hey, what, what we do matters. There's a reason why there's so many aircraft in southwest Virginia, northeast Tennessee, the Appalachian region. It's because of the roads that we have and the roads that we don't have. And it's also because of the hospital systems that shut down in these rural areas. It takes longer to get by ground than once, two higher levels of care. And that golden hour is a real thing. And we want to be able to tell, you know, our elected officials, when they come to us and ask us questions, "Why do you have five aircraft within 50 nautical miles of this location?" We can tell them, this is why. And, uh, we had 172 calls last year from this county to respond. But every patient we fly, we contact them afterwards, we ask them how they're doing, how we did. If they're a member, um, we ask them to provide us an email or an address to give them a release form, so we can deal with their insurance. And at that point, the member's done, you know? We take out that fight for the next year, two year and a half, trying to get paid from the insurance. In the end, if insurance says, you know what, Mr. Leonard just had a heart attack, it was no big deal because of rust and dirt on it, he would have been fine. And they completely deny the claim, he's a member, he doesn't have to worry about anything.
So Dan, is this available to county employees now?
It's available to any resident.
Does the county have a plan now?
It's not included in their benefits package, you know?
Have they been polled or anything on whether or not they want this coverage if it comes out of their check?
No. It would be voluntary if you did it like that.
It's going to be a voluntary benefit, payroll deduction.
If it was voluntary, did you still do the same route?
We did, we did. We do that, sir. Because we know, you did go about, about 150 full and part-time employees. What we did is we reviewed your guys' insurance, vetted it, made sure it was some insurance that we could work with and, you know, we've had history with. Uh, and then we base that price, uh, the normal price is $85 a year, and we reduced it down to the $60 based on your census and employees' account. A lot of your employees are already members. A lot of people in this room are already members.
So if I wanted to know, and it cost me how much?
Off the street, $85 a year. And that's coverage of your entire household.
$85, okay.
This is reduced straight to the real per unit of the county, because we vetted them. Your insurance, uh, board members are included in that, any volunteers shows the county, uh, as well.
It's a good plan, I.
I figured you did.
Appreciate you, folks, appreciate you. Didn't recognize you. We both look more handsome today.
Oh, look at that.
Okay, next we got supplemental appropriations.
Mr. Chairman, with the exception of the first one, all of these are re-appropriations from the prior year. These are funds that carry year to year. So we're just carrying forward the balances in those funds at the end of June 30th. The first one is a, just a strictly supplemental appropriation to each year, excuse me, for the VITA grant to the Commissioner of Revenue's office for the term of his tenure.
Make the motion, we approve these supplemental appropriations. Okay, got a motion to approve these supplemental appropriations.
I'll second it.
Got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we got, uh, next we got old business, Office of Emergency Medical Services grant.
As you recall, last month, Board had a request to accept a grant from the Office of Emergency, Emergency Medical Services in an amount of $44,800. This requires a local match of at least $11,200. Grant would be to provide the purchase of new laptops for all rescue squad ambulances operating in the county. The most recent quote that Mr. Beatty was able to get for those laptops and amounts has a total cost of $64,802, which means the county to accept the grant and make the purchase would have to put up $20,200 in local match. We are required to note by OEMS of our decision of either to accept or reject the grant later than September 1st.
I'll make a motion that we accept the grant. I think anything that we can provide, uh, our emergency medical services is a benefit to the citizens of this county. I agree, I second that. Got a motion, that's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, under new business, we got, uh, Board of Appeals, Board of Zonals Fields. I apologize, I haven't had a chance to, to, uh, talk to anyone yet on mine. It's okay, I'll like to table mine until next month.
Second.
It's okay. Better motion? If, if needed, be a motion.
I'll say it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number two is, uh, Southwest Virginia Community Corrections.
First, Chairman, I nominate Diane Roberts for that position.
Diane Roberts, that's, that's who they, uh, recommended, yeah, recommended, yeah. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got, uh, Convenience Center fencing final payment.
Can you have a copy of the invoice for that final payment for fencing at the new Stone Creek Route 606, Convenience Center site and the expansion at Giriden? We previously paid 75% of the total, so this is just the remaining 25% balance of $5,467.20. Both sites are complete now, with exception of 606, we will need to pave the entrance. We plan to be advertised tomorrow, but we will be opening that site on August the 27th. We want to get some traffic on that entrance because we filled in the Dix line in there to, to create that entrance. We want to get some traffic coming, get packed down good, and then we'll come back and pave it a little bit later date. But we'd just like to get some traffic running on it to, to seal it out, seal it good, get packed in.
Make the motion, both of you.
Got a motion, you got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got Thompson and Litten, price proposal for clerk's office's analysis.
Last month, you heard the request from the clerk's office for some improvements, primarily, uh, air conditioning and central heat. And then we discussed the possibility of just seeing at least what it would cost for, uh, the architect to, uh, do an analysis of this entire space for both the HVAC system, uh, windows, drop ceilings, new lighting, and any needed electrical upgrades. They came back and you see from their, uh, letter, their proposed lump sum fee for the sculpt of that is $17,622. I asked for a breakdown on that. I'm already seeing smiles, so I, I knew I would need further breakdown. And, and you have that, uh, I copied and pasted directly from his email onto the memo that I provided you, their proposed fee for architectural work, electrical engineering, and mechanical engineering, so.
We talked about last time, having one of those four units. And we talked about putting it into the next, we talked about going through that wall, we found out that that wall emptied out into the snack machines set about outside. The wall behind, the main concern was Lisa McGlothlin's office, which was the one that they'd been monitoring, it was so hot. The room next to Lisa is the kitchen. If it's 85, the kitchen, so watch, you're not in there all the time. If we went through the wall behind where Lisa sits, that would empty out into the hallway. Move the hot air from her office to the hallway, and then it gets picked up with the rest of the air, is my thinking. The only concern is whether or not there's any condensation that would come from that. I don't know the answer to that, but I'd like to look into that, I'd like you to look into that and see what happens if we just put that hot air out into the hallway.
Okay.
I mean, that's, we're talking about $18,000 for somebody to give us advice on what we ought to do.
Well, I mean, it gives you, we were looking for preliminary cost figures. So they have to, they have, well, not defending them, I understand how much that is and what, how far that could go solving some of the problems. But at the same time, everything has to be done by code. And that's one of the issues I'll have to look at on exhausting that into another area of the building, whether or not the code will allow us to do that or not. But, you know, I, I can check on it and see if there's any feasibility on that.
Either that or, if I'm thinking right, underneath her office would be where they keep old files in the basement. I don't know how much condensation there is from one of those units, or if it stores its own. I assume that it puts it outside. But I wonder if you could just go put it straight down into the basement? And I have a bucket down there.
I think, when the bucket fills up, you flood, though, that's the problem. You're dealing with weekends and.
Empty the bucket, it doesn't flood.
Oh, I'm saying you're dealing with weekends.
Yeah, I get, but I don't know how much it puts out, and I don't know if it's a gallon of value.
Well, that's going to depend on the humidity level in the room.
And I don't know if there's a drain downstairs or, or not?
There's, there's an old bathroom down there. Probably in that general area, uh, not right under that office, uh, but in that area. But, and again, exhausting that heat down there with records stored, it's already probably bad enough down there. I, I don't know, we'll just have to look in.
I, I make a motion, we'll table that and allow the public a chance to look into that.
Got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, recess, is there a time in recess?
Five-minute recess. Okay, we got, everybody ready? United Way Memorandum of Understanding.
Chairman, you have a copy of the request from United Way of Southwest Virginia for the county to consider entering into a memorandum of understanding. With them, uh, the purpose of this, they're, they've been providing some food vouchers and other funding through Departments of Social Services in the region to assist folks who are struggling during the pandemic. They're also, uh, have announced funding available for some Wi-Fi hotspots. And they are attempting to obtain either Virginia Department of Emergency Management or the Federal Emergency Management Agency to provide reimbursement to them. And they're seeking localities, basically partner with them through these MOAs or MOUs, which shows that the locality is involved and it is serving an emergency, providing an emergency service in the locality. Based on the, the language of the MOU, the county's basic responsibility assigned in this is to serve as a cooperating agency for the various relief projects as they determine them and provide any technical assistance that we could possibly provide in evaluating projects to ensure adequate service delivery. Most of the burden is on United Way, since they've undertaken this initiative themselves. There's no, no funding request from the county attached to that. Their hope is to obtain state federal reimbursement for emergency management.
I'll make a motion that we accept the United Way Memorandum of Understanding.
One second.
Okay, got a motion, that's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we have Appalachian Voices' Letter of Support Request.
Have a, basically just printed an email that, uh, Mr. Wales sent me from Appalachian Voices in their attempts to further the.
in their attempts to further the utility scale solar projects and manufacturing projects in Southwest Virginia. This may be something, I was maybe on the Wisco Board, maybe you've seen something at your last meeting on this, I'm not sure. I was thinking there was some action. I know they did not provide a letter of support, but it basically the cause, they, Mr. Mayor, I don't think they were in position to pick and choose since they represent four localities, the three counties and the city of Norton, and since this is a Gold Virginia project application, I don't think they wanted to weigh in on it. They're stating that they're proposing to provide targeted analysis and technical assistance to help local manufacturers pivot or expand into the energy storage slash electrification field, and also work to attract and establish a national player in that field to locate a facility in the region. And this, again, their request is for a letter of support for energy storage manufacturing. It would be a Gold Virginia funding application that they would submit, would not be in the county's name, but...
What size of solar?
They're saying utility scale.
There's nothing that would harm the county, is there, involved in that?
I, I recently had a phone conversation with them, they were following up on some survey information on utility scale solar. And some of the comments that I've shared with them was that, to date, the only interest that we've been, the only time we've been approached was one time about the possibility of solar scale, or utility scale solar in the county, and in both cases, it was very, what would be pretty much considered prime agricultural land involved. And since it's energy, production of energy related, and I conceded that I realized that the coal field areas sometimes are harder to gain access to, but I think it would be a win-win for everybody if former energy-producing properties, i.e. the coal properties, were converted to solar generated. And it's a vast acreage property there. In many cases where it's been surface mined, there's level lands, you got returned to contour land that could be utilized. It seems that when solar first began to be discussed in this region, it was always about using former mined land property and making it productive again, but when it came down to the reality of where projects are being proposed, it's on flatlands that's in competition for any type of industry to come in. And again, I realize that development on sloping land may be a little more difficult, but if you're putting an industrial building on a piece of land that's sloping, you have to go and grade that, you have to put quite a bit of additional cost into it, grade it out, to make it suitable for a structure to be located on it. Whereas with solar panels, they can be staggered, and still mounted on sloping land, you wouldn't have all that development of cost, and it'd take a little bit more to get them set in the ground because of that slope, but it can be done. So, that's the only thing, I guess it's disappointing to me that when most of the discussion about solar projects, they want to, first thing they want to look at is flat ground that's close to the highway, is what they can find. Of course, these facilities have to go, they have to be very close to the main parade grid transmission lines to make them feasible. But that's been the only interest shown here, and it was just one phone call, and there's been no follow-up on it since that time, so. And I need to do a little bit of research, I'm not sure exactly what the General Assembly did this year, if anything, on solar facilities, because at one time, you basically, if you had a utility scale solar site that came in, because there was an incentive, or has an incentive from the General Assembly, to get those developed, you could only tax twenty percent of the value. So, whereas if you got an industrial prospect who did five million dollars worth of improvements to hit to that, to an industrial property, you could tax it to five million dollars assessed value. If you'd had that same five million invested in solar, you'd be able to tax a million and a quarter of it.
Are these, are these people talking about only doing solar in flatlands?
Well, I mean, no, I mean, they haven't, they haven't identified any areas that they're promoting, as far as Lee County that I'm aware of. This is, this is an initiative that basically came out, primarily stems from the first economic forum that was held up in Wise, what, four years ago?
Right.
That's, that's, they established at that forum, there was a solar work group that formed coming out of that, and they've been working with and through Appalachian Voices pretty much since that time.
I don't see anything that we have, want to lose anything about going ahead and approving this.
I don't either, I think it's a great thing.
I do too.
Talking about the agriculture land, I mean, there's a lot of these solar farms that have grazing cattle and sheep on the same property as the solar farm, so.
Yeah.
I mean, we, bird in the hand, wood in the bush, you know, we can't hold out on not having solar because we hope somebody builds a factory on the exact same property that they put the solar farm.
I'm, I'm for it.
I make a motion that we direct a letter of support.
Is that a second? Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got the Commonwealth Attorney's Dehumidifier.
After last month's meeting, when this was probably, I went to that office to see how we could go about mounting the dehumidifier in the area that you were talking about. After looking at the whole office, I'm not really sure that's going to resolve any of the issue in, in the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. The restroom that you're talking about is probably fifteen feet around the corner, or twelve to fifteen feet around the corner from his office door, and is not going to circulate air from that area. I think one of the, and he had a dehumidifier back in his office the day I was there, the day I went up there, they had it out hallway, they said he didn't want it in his office. We talked about the issue, and they're running, actually running five dehumidifiers in that office, a lot of areas, a lot of offices, they'll run one in almost every office, trying to keep the humidity down. Humidity is an issue in this building throughout, it's all three floors. There's a, a inline dehumidifier in the basement that was put in where that area was renovated and modified somewhat, and it helps with the issue down there. The humidity is a little, is worse on this floor than it is on the next floor down, I'll grant you that, but we do have humidity issues in all of it. I talked with our HVAC vendor or contractor the other day who does the repairs, and actually I called him in the building inspector's office, and if you're not aware of it, Tom spent a lot of years in design and installation of industry-grade HVAC systems, I mean, large, large manufacturing plant systems. But, there, there's some, one of the things with this building, there's some design flaws. Not necessarily design, Mr. Bush actually did a, he did a free analysis for me about twenty years ago, better than twenty years ago, on that system, trying to get better performance out of it, and determined at that time, and still stands by, that the HVAC system was designed properly, but when the building was built, he didn't build it right, and it will never perform completely to the level that it should. But we're also in a building that was built or designed right after the energy crisis of the mid-seventies, and they're not, it's not designed, the system's not designed to do the same thing that a system today would do. We could look at a, an entire system dehumidifier that would help to remove the humidity from the air, that's going to generate more heat as it, as it works to do that, which the system then has to deal with that extra heat that's coming through it as well. One of the other things that we're going to try, as soon as Little Jimmy Gordon comes down, we still call him Little Jimmy, opposed to Big Jim, we're going to change the set point. I don't know who has, I don't know whether Johnson Controls did that at some point with some of the renovations or something that went on, but they determined that a set point on the supply side of the air, the cool air, has been brought up a little above where it should be, it's sitting on about sixty-three right now. Typically, it always ran at about fifty-seven or fifty-eight degrees, so we're going to look at bringing that supply side, that set point back down to between fifty-five and fifty-seven degrees. The cooler, the cooler you chill your air down to on that supply side, the more humidity it removes out of the air. And I commented to Jim about that, that years ago, I can recall, there was always a stream of water that ran across the road down here, because this system drains into, storm drain down here in the curve across from Lee Farmer's Co-op, and of course, they put a drain under the road there now so you wouldn't see it, but, I mean, it was just constant stream of water there in the summertime where it was pulling that humidity out there. And it seems like in the last eight to ten years, the humidity has gotten worse.
How long has it been a problem in the building?
It's been several years.
Been ten or more?
Oh, yes.
When's the last time that we priced a whole system dehumidifier?
Jim thought that, Jimmy gave me a price on it a couple of years ago, but I don't recall him ever giving me a price, we've talked about it, but I told him, I've asked him a month or more ago to go ahead and look at what his system would cost, they're not cheap.
So, when you say not cheap, you're thinking what? What do you expect?
He won't give me a, he won't, he won't tell me, he just says, you probably don't want to know, but I told him, go ahead and get me a price on it.
Do we have, let's say it costs fifty thousand dollars, do we have that kind of money in the budget set aside for that?
Not specifically for that, no.
So, you, who is it that does these kind of repairs? When the board votes to do something like install a shelf, who is it that does it? Does the work?
To install what?
A shelf, the vote was to install the shelves.
Now, for something minor like that, I would ask Gary Collinsworth in there to do it. I mean, if you want it mounted in there, I can put it in there.
I mean, you're not saying that it hurts anything, you just don't think it'll hit much, right?
Well, typically, they leave the bathroom door shut, so it's only going to treat the air right in that room or in close proximity to it.
The idea was, and the discussion last month was, that Fuller said that they emptied them daily, Dee Dee and I went down there earlier before the meeting, they said they're emptying them twice a day, all five of them, nobody's there on the weekend, so all they had to do is leave the doors open, the door to the one that's got it in it on the weekend, let it drain into the sink, and that was, that was the whole point of what we're trying to do. I don't understand where, I mean, I understand why we're talking about the larger issue, but as far as the shelf, we voted on it. I say install the shelf, put it up there, it doesn't hurt anything, and let's move on with the other issues on, can't, how much does it cost to get a whole system dehumidifier? If we can afford it, good, if we can't, just do this weekend.
I'll get with Mr. Collinsworth, and as soon as he can work it in, we'll put the shelf up and put it in there.
Might recommend that you change that setting before we make any decisions about the whole system, I think it helps.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, we think that will help some, it's not going to take care of all the problem.
Right.
But it could help some. And I'll already give him the okay to come and do that as quickly as he can get it out here.
All right then, we move on then to personal property tax relief rate for 2020.
This is an annual requirement to adjust the personal property tax relief on a yearly basis based on the total of all vehicles registered in the county, subject to personal property, and the amount of funding, which is a set amount from the state each year for personal property tax relief. Actually, only changed one hundred of a percent this year, went from fifty-nine oh two to fifty-nine oh thirty. There is a resolution to adopt that rate.
I make a motion, we adopt Resolution twenty dash four one one, or is it zero?
Zero one.
Zero one one. Second. Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got the Town of Pennington Gap Care, Zachary, and Burton Request.
This was a late entry into the agenda, I got these just minutes before we're trying to get everything out, so I had not had time to review any of them or anything else. They had asked if they could request reimbursement for a portion of what they have spent since March twentieth that they feel would be eligible under Care's act funding, so you have a total amount requested there for reimbursement at this time of sixty-nine thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars and ten cents.
Where are we on the contract with them, with the MOU, them having to pay us back?
We just need to get one drawn up.
I don't see how we can vote to reimburse them until we have that place.
I would agree.
I make a motion that we table it, at least until we get the contract drawn up with them.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got reports and recommendations from our county attorney. So, reports and recommendations from our county administrator.
Sorry, but I can't say that. One, treasurer actually made a request on this back several months ago when he moved from state employment over to local. He's requesting, and I've done just a little bit of research on it, the Virginia retirement system provides a deferred compensation program, which allows you to basically put aside tax deferred current income. We have a tax deferred program now through Nationwide Deferred Compensation, which is a widely recognized program. This would not take the place of Nationwide, what I'm going to ask the board is that if you would simply authorize us becoming a participant with PRS on this program. There'd be no cost to the county, they do have what's called a cash match plan, where if the employee puts in so much, then the county matches it. This is not, this is strictly the employee themselves. Now, hybrid employees, those employees hired since, I think, 2014, they can already participate in this, this would just be for the basic membership, folks who have been within the system longer than that, the Plan Ones and Plan Twos. So, just would ask that the board consider authorizing, offering this as an additional benefit to employees, again, no cost to the county on this, it's not mandatory that the employees participate in it, it's their choice.
I'd like that motion. Second. And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Second, I have a request from the Healthway. Second, I have a request from the Health wagon. The Health Department had contacted them to see if they could begin providing some additional testing for the COVID-19 virus in the Lenoisco and the Cumberland Plateau Planning District areas, that's the seven coalfield counties and the city of Norton. They're hoping to be able to begin providing this service in order to provide more testing. They need some additional personnel. They're estimating the need for two extra nurses for one eight-hour day each week, and also for an administrator or administrator, I guess just an assistant position there to help with them. You have a copy of the original email request, just a short paragraph there. The next page is the, did you get Mr. Smith there?
Robert.
Sorry.
Okay.
Dexter went over that. This is proposed for seventeen weeks, at a total cost throughout the region of thirty thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and eighty cents. As you turn on over there, the third page in that, they had an update called the Health Department, they're pretty much standing by the cost numbers that they're looking at, but they're asking if each county in, in those two districts could, would consider providing about fifty-one hundred dollars in funding from your CARES Act funding to assist with that additional testing. And of course, testing and contact tracing are both eligible expenses under the CARES Act.
I make a motion to approve this. What the other counties doing?
I know at this point Dickinson and Russell and Wise have all agreed to it.
Are they going to be here in Lee County?
They would, they're going to try to be in each county, I think, well, I'm not sure if they've got, they'll try to make it equal, I'm sure, as equal as they can, to us to provide, us and the Health Department to provide sites to them that we would like for them to do additional testing. Because they, it's, it's a mobile unit, so they can, you know, they can go into various communities, they don't have to set up in one place every time they come down.
Well, yeah, if we do it, I'd like it for them to do it by district, set up in a different district every time they drive. I, I think that would be good, give the public an opportunity.
I'll only put that in my motion that they do it district, but this. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I don't have anything on this yet, but I'll go ahead and threaten you since we're talking about CARES funding. The regional library, they circulated as a, an email, actually, this was active board package going out on Tuesday afternoon. They're looking, they're going to request at least at the counties that they serve, consider providing some COVID funds to them for the personal protective equipment, cleaning supplies, and the sneeze guard materials that they purchased to install at the various libraries. They have not provided any invoices yet, but they will provide invoices separated by county, it'll just be for what material they've used within Lee County for that service. So that will be kind of pretty good, play with that. Also, COVID related, what isn't anymore. Our Department of Housing and Community Development Small Business Grant that's been consolidated into a regional approach, that we're trying to move forward with that and get everything in place. She's passing across to you there, an interagency agreement. The city of Norton has been tabbed to be basically the fiscal agent on this project to serve as the applicant, but each locality involved has a set aside amount, and those are varying amounts. Lee County's portion of the funds out of the one point seven million dollar grant would be five hundred thousand dollars. The interagency agreement is between the city and the county's lead. They'll ask for these same type agreements with all the participating localities with Norton. Since they serve, they'll be serving as the applicant and fiscal agent. The interagency agreement here is mirrored after the same type of agreement that we use when we do water and sewer projects with community development block grants with DHCD. We always have an interagency agreement between the county and the public service authority because they're the one, the county receives the funding and the grant, but the public service authority is the one actually putting it in play. So we basically, in this interagency agreement, are just agreeing to comply with all the requirements of DHCD, provide the information needed for Norton to do what they need to do to provide the applications to them, and that Norton's agreeing that they'll pay the, pay the approved applications as they come down. Behind that agreement is basically an information sheet and a copy of what the actual application that businesses will fill out will look like. And I see the typo on it already, because he's got one point six million, and it's actually one point seven, I think. Anyway, it tells there what the eligible grant uses are, and I think we went over these last month, up to five thousand dollars for retooling and technology activities that businesses take. And this includes sanitation, cleaning services, supplies, different things of that nature, and then up to ten thousand dollars in rent or mortgage relief for three to six months to, to help businesses out. One of the things that we lobbied for with DHCD was the potential, if, if a business, if it's an older business and they don't have rent to pay, if they own their building already and don't have a mortgage payment, the possibility of being able to help them with utility deals. But DHCD wouldn't budge on that one. So we're looking at other possibilities and maybe how we can assist them. They do provide some ineligible grant uses on there, but all of these applications would be available on the county's and the city's websites. The public would be directed to them, they would complete the application and then send it to the city of Norton, or maybe Lenoisco is actually going to screen them initially. There will be a project management team, which is always required of everything you do with, with DHCD. The project management team would also serve as the application review committee, and is made up of, at this point, the county administrators and city manager of the three counties and the city of Norton, as well as Mr. Harless with Town Manager Pennington Gap would serve, and the economic development director from Scott County, and the Chamber of Commerce CEO in Wise County would make up the committee that would review the applications for approval. What I'm asking you for approval tonight on is the interagency agreement. All of these have to be in place with the various counties prior to us being able to draw down any funds. We're not ready to draw them down, but I didn't want to be the last one to get it adopted, because I know how that feels.
This started out as, as Lee County getting its own money and administering it, its own money, is that right?
We, we, yes, we were looking at submitting an application. It happened that the town of Pennington had already submitted a preliminary application, and they asked us to put ours together. And then as other counties began developing them, DHCD came back and asked us to make this a regional grant rather than single locality.
When we were looking at doing it alone, where was this, was there some set aside for project administration then?
There would be, yes.
And who would have gotten that?
If we self-administered, typically with all our block grants, Lenoisco usually does the administration on those, because they've done so many of them, they've got the process down pat, as far as the record keeping and everything's yet to have in place.
What I'm getting at, it just, we're talking about a million seven, and somebody gets a hundred thousand dollars to dole out a million seven in five thousand dollar chunks. I just can't imagine why it would cost a hundred thousand dollars when the counties are the ones that are, I guess, somewhat vetting some of these people, and what are they doing for a hundred thousand dollars is really what I'm getting at.
It may or may not, they may or may not draw all of that against the project. They, DHCD usually sets a not to exceed amount on any adding funds.
So they bill it by the hour, or do they show how they?
It sets various costs, I mean, just the procedures that they walk through and do. And I, I'll go ahead and say this, if it's money that's going to your planning district commission, you're getting that money back in one way, shape, form, or value.
It's not, it's not, it doesn't stay in that, you'll get it back in some type of a grant or some type of a.
I'm not saying you'll get all of it back immediately, but I'm saying in goods, in services and in assistance they provide, sometimes monetarily, you will be, you'll reap some benefits from that.
Do you all get some reimbursement? You said the county administrators of the collective counties do something, what it was?
Well, we'll be serving on the project management team. No, we don't get paid for that. We, we have the same, you have the same scenario on water projects that are funded through block grants, and we don't get paid for that. Yes.
City of Norton.
Yes.
I'd make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next thing I have, the Lee County Animal Hospital has, they had rabies clinics scheduled back in the spring that had to be postponed because the Health Department had not approved them. They're proposing September nineteenth and October the third for drive-through clinics at Thomas Walker High School and Lee High School. When they call to see about this, I asked them to go ahead and contact the Health Department first, because I saw no point in bringing it to the board if the Health Department approved it, but they have. I don't have the actual letter from them, but I did have email correspondence with Brad Staller at the Health, the Environmental Health Manager, and Dr. Cantwell has approved it, they're just waiting to get the letter actually signed. So, so that they could get their advertising out and things like that, I wanted to go ahead and bring it to the board tonight.
What was that October date?
Uh, October third. Both of them would be planned from ten AM to three PM. They'll have an advertisement out there instructing people how, how to come, how to attend the clinics, stay in their vehicles. They'll, they'll basically just drive through and the vet and their techs will, will handle one car at a time. They have to have four supervisors' approval to hold rabies clinics.
Why can't they do that same thing at a location rather than people driving to Lee High or Thomas Walker? Why can't they do the same?
Once they get everything set up, it will be easier for them if it's, if it's at one location, so that they can control things at that point, rather than having to go to fourteen different sites and try to establish how people are lined up. I mean, they'll be there in advance to control how people access their services.
It's easier for them, but they're, they're not the ones trying to pack a dog, uh, miles either.
True, but if you try to go back to the fourteen or fifteen sites, the Health Department's probably going to say, no, you have no control over what's going on at that location prior to you arriving on site. Usually, when they're traveling, they'll show up, the crowd's already there waiting on them, and they're just there for a few minutes, thirty minutes to an hour, and then they're going to the next site. So at a single location, it, it allows them to establish basically control and security of the site as far as the virus is concerned. And that's what's key to the Health Department in bringing groups of people together. If you bring large, or promote bringing large groups together at a site and you have no preliminary control over what they're doing, or whether they're social distancing or wearing masks or anything like that, they're probably going to say, no, forget it.
I mean, I think that's the whole purpose of why they're proposing it, in just two locations.
I, I just don't think that's a good plan. Maybe you all do. I don't think we'll get many animals vaccinated that way.
It forces more people together, which is what you're trying to avoid by having fewer sites. You're going to have more people, but, you know what I mean? Rather than spreading it out like we usually.
I think they could do it fourteen different days rather than going to fourteen different locations in one day. Why not do it fourteen different days? I just don't think we're going to get that many animals vaccinated.
When's the next one after this?
That's the biggest of the ones proposed right there.
How far in advance do these are proposed?
Usually, we get the request in April for the May. They usually do them in May, three, three Saturdays, usually three Saturdays in May. And that's when they do the rotational.
So they're proposing ten days now?
They're proposing two, two days, September nineteenth and October third. The plan, their plan, as it stated, their advertisement will instruct clients on the procedure during the clinic. It'll be drive-through, they, the vet and their tech will remain stationary, cars will drive up to it, they'll have signage directing them through the drive-through, they'll be instructing, they'll be instructed that they have, have a mask, must be worn during the vet's contact with them. If they're displaying any signs or symptoms of the COVID virus, they don't even need to show up, they must remain in their car at all times. There'll be a staff member placed at the entrance directing the flow and reviewing the procedure with clients as necessary. They'll remain in their cars with their animals to be vaccinated, they will wear a mask. They have no mask, they don't get serviced. The vet and their tech will vaccinate the animals in the car or just outside of the client's car, depending on the situation. There'll be two staff members collecting client information for the vaccine certificate and collecting payment. Everyone of the vet staff that's at the clinic will be in appropriate PPE. They'll be required to wear gloves and masks at a minimum, and disinfectants will be used as necessary. Lee County Animal Control will have an officer there for clients to purchase county tags. Also, they have to remain in their vehicles during contact with animal control. And as they finish with one caller, they'll disinfect themselves and the materials that were in contact with any client or patient, and allow the next caller to move up in the And I think they go to the extent they have with protocol, knowing that if they didn't, they probably wouldn't get it approved with the Health Department.
But if we're going to do that, I propose that we, with our COVID money, provide some masks so nobody gets turned away because they forgot their mask, be a cheap fix to keep people from being turned away.
I guess we could try it, I just don't say that we're going to get too many unvaccinated.
Do we have masks, county?
We have some, we can get more. In fact, we just got, what, two hundred in?
I put twenty out there at each location or something, in case somebody comes without a mask, or thirty, whatever.
Should we need a motion for that?
Yes.
Except to... I'll make a motion, we approve it two dates for vaccinations.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, you got a motion in second, all in favor? Any opposed?
Also, our smart scale application for this year, we only have one project. This is a repeat from previous year. This is the project in Pennington Gap out on the east end of town, between Mulberry Street and Riverbend Drive. This is an area in front of Hardee's, McDonald's, that area where there's quite a bit of traffic making left turns in both directions. The other projects that we had previously proposed, the one there at Stone Creek and with the intersection of six oh six and four twenty-one. Did not, was not going to be eligible, wasn't going to score. And the project that was proposed in Western Lee at the, at the S-curves there going into Rose Hill. I at first thought we might get some help on that, they jumped on it initially. And when they started looking at the surrounding area, some wetlands and this and that, they backed away in a hurry. So you're gonna get some Chevron arrows that point them through those curves down there. At that location and down where the trash dumpsters are at, they'll be putting some Chevrons up. To sort of help people maneuver those curves. So that leaves us with the one project down in Pennington Gap. We have submitted the project, we did it with the old resolution, so we needed an updated resolution to put with that now. And that's the resolution that's been handed out to you, resolution twenty dash oh twelve.
So the project is to do what exactly? Are you talking about the street that goes to town hall?
No, no, it's the main road. To make some improvements and create, basically be creating a right turn lane. As you come up through there to move into the right hand, a right-hand turn lane to go into McDonald's or Hardee's. So that through traffic can move on through. You get a lot of traffic, there's been quite a few accidents in that area, either rear ends or some head-ons where the traffic's turning left. But also traffic turning right into that area slows down and impedes traffic trying to just move through town going west.
You're saying Mulberry Street then is the one before McDonald's?
Mulberry is where you turn down, I think, there, used to be Cuz's, or maybe still is, at the back of the shop. From there out to the Riverbend Drive. We're not sure how it's gonna score. We didn't have another project immediately ready to go. You'd have to have a project that we don't have the current cost estimate on, to be able to even submit them. So. And as I say, the other two projects that we had put in, they mixed both of them on for various reasons.
I'll make that motion, resolution to support, uh, project twenty day zero one two. Say. You got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Then the licensing right now. There's a letter request from the school board. Their August thirteenth meeting, they provided a letter of savings. They had eighteen thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixty-three cents in, uh, excess funds to return back to the county. As of the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth, twenty twenty. They have no excess state revenues to be re-appropriated, as they have had for the past two or three years. Typically, based on the agreement that we have in place. The county would appropriate two-thirds of this eighteen thousand dollars to the capital improvement funds. And one-third would revert back into the county's general fund. They are requesting that the entire balance of eighteen thousand, six ninety-seven, sixty-three be transferred to the school board capital reserve fund.
Why wouldn't they put it in their maintenance fund?
They, this is not their money, this reverts back to the county at year end.
If we give it to them, they're just putting it in?
Now, if you grant it, it will go into the capital reserve fund, they can only spend it if it's appropriated by you. It doesn't go into their general budget. But typically, our standing agreement is, uh, that they get two-thirds of any money returned, put into the capital reserve fund. And a third comes back to the county. In this instance, they're asking for the full amount to be put into the capital reserve fund.
Didn't they ask for this?
They asked for the same thing last year, I think the board were talking about sixty or seventy thousand last year.
And the board split it away?
We went with the, with the previously approved two-thirds and one-third.
Did they need it more than we do?
Have you looked at their capital improvement needs?
I've looked at ours, but I haven't looked at theirs that close.
I'd have to pay for air. You guys want to do it? Recommend we stay with the original agreement. There's not much using places in the break, but if you don't ever abide by it.
What was your recommendation, what did you say?
Stay with our original agreement. Two-thirds and one-third. Everybody agree with that?
I need a motion.
Is that in form of a?
Yes.
Okay, he's got that motion. In the form of a motion, got a second?
I have a second.
I have a second, all in favor? Any opposed?
I see it from me.
Are you sure?
That matter.
Okay. Our supervisor, report recommendations from the board. You got anything?
I have any. Mr. Chairman, I was down at the airport a while back, and Robert and I talked about this January or February, and I frankly just forgot about it. But there's some big gaps down to airport and the terminal doors. I mean, big enough of, I would say close to big enough a mouse could get in, but certainly a lizard or something. I went down there a few Sundays ago, and there were just spiders and all kinds of bugs everywhere. I swept them up, and I'm guessing that Dane probably does that weekly or every other week. I mean, it just needs new weather stripping down the center of the doors, maybe at the bottom too, but it's a pretty big gap.
Those doors have never been tied, even when they were installed, they weren't that tight.
Is that something that Gary and him can do, or is that?
When he gets some time, but...
Well, I didn't know if it was something they were capable of, but I don't know if it's an adjustment thing or just weather stripping, it looks...
They'll have to buy some sweeps down that stair guard. Now, the bottom, they may be able to just adjust that. Because those sweeps are usually in there, and they're adjustable to a certain extent. Between the doors, I'll have to look at that and see.
Be good if they get that done for cold weather, because it's, I'm sure, letting a lot of heat down. The chain link fences at the convenience centers, they're getting them out like the chain link fence at the airport, it's now a problem. I don't know if they need to be sprayed, or if they just need to be weeded, but there's trees literally growing up in some of the fences. That's getting woven into the chain link fence and ruining the fences. Woodways specifically. Blackwater looks like it probably hasn't been mowed in a month or more. I don't understand why the rest of them don't look like that. The outdoor classroom gets mowed very often up in Stone Creek. But I was at Blackwater last Sunday, I guess it was, and it looked like a hayfield around that convenience center.
I know woodways, they clear, I remember the last year, year before last, but the cedars grow fast, and that's what grows over there, probably.
It's what the cedars, but instead of weeding the fence, can they not just spray the chain link fence?
Yeah, they do, do that quite a bit. I'll check with you and see what's going on with that.
Labor Day, I've had several people complain, and they've heard it before I was on the board. Why can't you throw your trash away on July fourth, on Labor Day, these holidays, et cetera? I'm not proposing that the workers have to be there on Labor Day or any of these other holidays. But I'd like for them to just leave the gate open the night before the holiday and let the people throw their trash away. I make that in form of a motion.
Yeah, I think I'd be okay with that, because I know, I know that Kioki, I expect from Kioki itself, I know they just throw it in front of the gate. They just pull it, burn, just throw it in front of the gate, so the worker has to pull it, burn, pick it up. And carry it in anyway, so it might be better off. And it'd just be a matter of that one day.
I second that. Mr. Chairman. Is this all observed holidays, or is it certain ones, I mean?
Well, I would like to do it for all of them, but I was gonna make the motion just for Labor Day to see how it goes. But if the board feels comfortable with making it all observed holidays, I'll make the motion anyway.
How y'all feel, y'all see?
I'd like to see how it goes, I'd like to try to see how that works.
Try to see how it goes. Well, you're moping up like at all times, you asking for it.
Yeah, I should be trying.
So it'll be left open the night before, and then not closed again until the day after? Okay.
But the worker will still have his day off?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it'll be open, to be left open, say the holiday's on Monday, it'll be left open Sunday night. It won't actually be locked back up till Tuesday night, because they'll, they won't go back out Monday night to lock.
Okay. And if the transfer station wants to run on Saturday, if they think it'll be a problem with overflow, I'm fine with leaving that up to them. Oh yeah, I mentioned to Dane recently that I thought that it would be an appropriate use of our COVID money for automatic doors. The main interest of the courthouse, most courthouses now have, I mean, most public buildings in general now have a push button.
We ain't finished this other motion yet.
We're not?
We have, we got it here.
Alright.
You think we got a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Gary, go.
So libraries, courthouses, most public buildings now have one of those little square buttons you kick in or hit with your elbow or whatever. I was way out Tennessee this weekend, and a lot of public places are putting things on their doors where you can put your, put your foot on there and open public doors with it. You can put your, like, your forearm in it and open the door, a lot of different things they're coming out with. But it would help handicap people and would help with COVID issues. You got Judge McAuley, for example, who walks in every day with Clorox wipes to open the door. It's something she could kick with her foot, maybe she's extreme, I don't know, but I think it'd be a good use.
She might as well.
Do what?
That would be something. I think that, I think that...
They have to get her a foot bath.
I think that electronic door would be a good thing anyway there for, you know...
We just talked about the one entrance, the main entrance?
It's the only one we'll have open, right after we, after we finish our...
It'd be the only one open to the public, employees will be able to come in the side door.
Well, I was just proposing to make any of those, whatever that ends up, I...
Well, that's the only handicap one anyway.
Yeah.
That's, that's the biggest concern with, you know, handicap opening that door, because I can see where it could be a problem, if they gave them other shit.
Where are we on the issue of the survey for the entrance?
Waitin' on lead.
Law library, I've talked to some of you about, talking about space for a works program. Did we give some deadline to the bar, Dane, was it August thirty-first, for them to have the books out of there?
I honestly, I haven't sent that out. I've been, I'm not making excuses, I've been covered up for the past two weeks with more junk than I can push aside. Fast enough to make some of that happen, so some of the smaller things have fallen through the cracks. I did stop in there and look the other day with, as far as the books, I mean, if they want them framed, you mentioned leaving the bookshelves. I see no purpose in leaving them in there. It's just taking up an extra, extra foot of space that you could use in any other setting, because I don't think they'll be used. Most of them were just homemade, one of the trustees that was in the local jail, when we had it built. Not the ones on the sidewalk, he built all of those.
Well, we hire somebody to take that position, just leave to their discretion if they want the bookshelves removed, if they don't, we'll get rid of them. You, I don't mind, I'll send for an email or send an email to the bar, tell them to have them out, if they want them out.
Yeah, they want them out, I don't have a problem with that.
What's enough time on that? Give me some space. Have them out by the fourth, that's a Friday?
Yeah.
I'll do that.
First time, first service.
The only other thing I had was the recodification, well, two things, recodification and the airport fence spraying bids on that. Did we get a proposal out on that?
No, not on spraying.
I thought we voted to do one on spraying the east side, bush hogging the east side and spraying the fence.
I'll look back, I don't, I'll look back, I don't recall.
Have we advertised for anything regarding?
Bush hogging the east side.
The east, right, the east side. Wasn't that where, you mentioned that it was gonna be an issue with the FAA, with those trees growing up? The entrance side or the road?
Uh, we've got trees that will become an issue, but they're not on our property. They'll eventually become an issue, but they're across the road. Most of that out, that was in the, that was gonna hit penetration zone, we took down about two or three years ago. Now, what's on the south side, where that's growing up, we've got some areas over there that they're gonna have to come down. Because the runway protection zone on that south side actually goes across the berm over there and down that slope.
I'm positive that we made a vote about the fence or the area within the fence, or both. I think we made a motion on both, cleared it manually, like what we talked about forestry mulcher, or if somebody wanted to spray it.
Okay, I'll go back and check it.
And the recodification, do we solicit for professional services on?
I have it here, did anybody have any changes or see anything in that proposal? In the proposed RFP that I gave? Okay. And the only thing I lack is the manual count, estimated count on how many ordinance changes there've been. Because they want to know that before they start it.
I was thinking, oh, okay, so you're saying that the sheet that you gave us had an approximation, right?
It had an approximate amount on the zoning changes. But that doesn't include other ordinances, this year of ordinance changes. So I need to get a rough estimate on that, doesn't have to be exact, I'm gonna give a ballpark number on that.
It's all up to you.
Uh, I'd just like to, for Rick to get this in the newspaper. The people, you know, it's on, assigned up front and forward, they have to go to North. They go to Dustville to Pioneer Center. That's one of their one stops through the workforce development. That's one of their one stops through the workforce development where they group all these different agencies together. So, you know, it's a lot more convenient driving to Dunfield than it is going north. That's all I have. Charlie?
Yeah, I talked to Dane about one of the applications that he has received from Sid Lanier. And he called me last night and he has some really good ideas. He's a, went to Bluefield College in Bluefield, Virginia, and that's where I got to know him, was I went there too. And he has been on their board of trustees for six, seven years. He's no longer on their board. Last year was his last year, he dropped off. And he is a graduate of Virginia Tech. And he, also, he told me he's an airplane pilot. And I was impressed by that. And I don't know, what did you think, Dane?
I just saw where his application come in. I haven't looked at it that closely and I wouldn't discuss it in open session because that's an ongoing application process.
I was gonna make a motion that we discuss the advice of council thing we talked about earlier with the property and employment anyway.
Okay, I just got a couple of things. One of the things that I just want to propose, what do you guys think? Is it possible that we can put some of the blue bulbs in front of the courthouse and in back of the courthouse to show our support for law enforcement? And the light, the light bulb? What lights? Open the door, front door? I don't see anything.
I've actually, I've been wanting to get these front when you repair. There's lights up in the, up in the eaves of this part of the building that should light that front walkway. They haven't worked ever since I've been here. They should be automatic, they should come on with the photo sale on top of the roof. But getting access to it, we're gonna have to have a lift to get up there too. And one of the things I was looking at, we had a window blown out over here in the judge's office, not in her office, but back in the chambers there. Two, three weeks ago, we had a real bad storm here, a lot of wind. It was actually right after our last board meeting. Because I sat down here at the side door for about thirty minutes waiting for a break to get out of here. But we're gonna have to get a lift up there. They can't get to it to seal it from the outside without a lift. And I thought about maybe trying to get the electrician here the same day when we did that and get him to try and check those zippers in a way we could get that lighting back in up in the eaves of the building to provide a little more light on that front porch area, front walkway. What other, I mean, as far as behind the building, I don't know.
Just any order?
The only other lighting we've got is the security lighting right around the edge of the building. Those wall pack panels. And I don't know if you can get those in a tinted color or not.
If you can't, you can't. But if we could get one in front of this, if we could just get one, one bulb in front of the courthouse, I mean, I just think it's something that we can show our support for all of our law enforcement through our county towns. Law enforcement through the nation, they're going through a tough time right now and I think they deserve all the support they can get, especially if we can give them just a little bit of support. I think it's important. And that, our blue light bulb certainly doesn't cost very much. I mean, if nobody else opposes that?
No.
Just a suggestion. But my other thing was, like, some of the rescue departments, do they need to go ahead and start giving you some invoices and stuff, or is there a?
I need to get them. I've talked to one or two of them, but again, that's another memo that I need to get out.
I told a couple of them I would just ask you, I didn't want to flood you with a bunch of stuff. How about you being ready for it?
Hopefully, I'll try to get that out before the end of the week so they'll understand what we're doing.
But I told them, you know, I'm sure that when you were ready, you would let them know, but... That's all I got.
You want a motion on closed session? I'll make a motion, we go into closed session pursuant to two point two dash thirty-seven eleven sub eighty-one to discuss personnel and sub eight to discuss advice of council.
I'll take it, all in favor? Any of them?